All right, I don't call this morning, I don't go to sleep. And Aaron will cover the quarter six.
Oh, they're special over there, because they get stem glasses.
It's great to know that somebody does that. Hey, at least there's not a red solo. We're talking about our water glass. Some have, some have a classy glass. We have these over there. And our red solo glass. I'll do tell you the right, the right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the November 6, 2024 meeting of Smithfield Town Council to order. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Randy Pack.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Smithfield Town Council meeting. Although it's a little bit out of order, but I'll take a point of personal privilege. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate those individuals that won a hard-fought council race. I see Mary Ellen Bieber Meyer, churchmate of mine, and Mr. Harris, and where, and Councilman Smith. Did I miss anybody out there?
Out of town.
Uh-huh?
Out of town.
Out of town. Good deal. Well, congratulations. Again, we look forward to working with you, and I'd also like to congratulate both Mr. Councilman Gibbs and Councilman Collins for a hard-fought battle as well. Thank y'all very much. It was a hard-fought race, and I think everybody ran an excellent campaign. So with that, we will move on to the closed session. Mr. Riddick? Mr. Stallings?
It'll be for real estate, specifically to discuss the potential sale of real estate, dealing with Thonwood Heights lot, as we work towards the redevelopment of that area.
Are you suggesting we get, we do that this evening?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Riddick.
And, uh, closed session concerning the briefing by legal counsel as potential legal hours.
All right.
Very short.
Okay. You get a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Smith, but they're second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Collins. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Pax?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Yes. We will be in closed session for, according to counsel, a very, very short period of time. Thank y'all. We hope.[198.45]
A little. Where is that? It is a little chilly. Turn the temperature up a little bit, yeah, probably. I'd like to reconvene to November 6, 2024, meeting the Smithfield Town Council. Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we need a motion that during the closed session, there was only a discussion as to the disposition of real property held for public purposes pursuant to 2.2-311A3 of the Code of Virginia and consultation with legal counsel concerning matters where discussion would adversely affect negotiating and litigation, the posture of the public body pursuant to 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved. Motion made by Mr. Pax, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Smith. Further discussion. Would you call the roll, please, ma'am?
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh...
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Donovan?
Yes. Next item we have on the agenda is Information Section. Mr. Stallings?
Included in your packet was the activity reports for the previous month. If there's any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
Questions of the town manager? All right, thank you. The next presentations, I understand, we have an update, on the update, is that correct, Mr. Stallings?
Uh, yes, sir. We originally had Mr. George Bowman from VDOT was going to be here tonight to give us an update on the bridge. He had a family emergency at the last minute. They will be here at the December council meeting to give you an update on the bridge project.
All right, thank you. Next is briefing by Holloway Board Supervisor Renee Roundtree. Supervisor Roundtree, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Between the last time I was here and now, we had our regularly scheduled work session, as well as a regular session. We also met in a joint meeting with the school board on October 8th, and then had an intergovernmental meeting November 4th. So, four things for you tonight. We have a new Smithfield food and history tour that combines a walking tour of Smithfield with samples from eight participating restaurants, and that's happening the first and third Fridays of the month. Judy's here, so if you want any more detail, sure she can give them. We're excited about that. We did vote that the real estate assessment schedule will remain every four years. We had, if you recall, the Commission of Revenue had asked us to consider changing it to three years. We voted, and it's still every four years, instead of changing. Thirdly, the Board of Supervisors conditionally approved the cost-share formula for the Ben's Church Boulevard Turner Drive transportation improvements, subject to the town taking similar action. So, again, we conditionally approved those costs and that project. And then finally, bids were received on October 31st for the Smithfield sidewalk project, and the low bid for construction was 1.3 million. This is barely within budget, but it appears that we will be able to move forward with that project. That's what I have for you this evening. Any questions?
Any questions, Supervisor Roundtree? You're a lot quicker than Supervisor Grace was. We really do appreciate that.
I aim to please. Thank you all.
Any questions?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Appreciate it. Next I have on the agenda is public comments. I have a number of folks signed up for the public comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes per speaker. The first one is Brandon Henderson. Henderson, good evening, sir.
Good evening, council members. Brandon Henderson, Sixth Poplar Court. Last night, voters made their voices heard in our town council race, choosing to bring in several new members who represent a different vision for our community's future. Given this clear mandate, I believe it's only fair and reasonable that the council refrain from making any significant or consequential decisions until January, when the new council members who reflect the will of the people are seated. Over the next couple months, pressing issues like the $6 million match, the approval of the cottages, and the sale of the Times Building may come before the council, but with the two of the current members set to leave office who were appointed rather than elected, pushing through these decisions now would ignore the voice of the people and fail to respect the mandate they've given. The voters have sent a strong message that they want change. I urge you to respect that by pausing on major decisions until the newly elected members take their seats in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Leah Walker? I read it correctly this time.
You did, thank you.
Yeah, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Leah Walker. I reside at 303 Red Point Drive in Smithfield. I also, like Mr. Henderson, am asking that you, sorry, given the outcome of yesterday's election in town council, and the significant number of citizens voting council members who committed to a different path forward for town, I respectfully request that you consider postponing any significant vote until the newly elected council is, starts its term in six weeks. The issue of transparency in town council, processes and communication was an ever constant topic in this election. It will go a long way for citizens to have faith in town governance of this council votes to ensure that controversial decisions, such as the sale of the Times Building, the $6 million taxpayer match, and the cottages battery, are, will reflect the full and active participation of elected members who will begin to serve in just a few weeks from now. Given the transitional nature of this session, postponing these votes would help foster greater community involvement, ensure that the decisions made are in the best long-term interest of the town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Caroline Gatewood Battle? Is it Battlefield? How are you, ma'am?
Fine, thank you. Good evening, members of town council. I'm Caroline Gatewood Battenfeld. I live at 209 Richmond Avenue in our beautiful historic town of Smithfield. I agree with everything the previous two speakers said, and as we know, the results of the election yesterday showed that the people would like a slowing of approval of new developments, especially with special use permits and planning commission waivers and all of that. Specifically, next Tuesday, the planning commission will have the public hearing on the cottages and their seven special use permits and planning commission waiver. If the planning commission should decide to vote yes for all of that, I respectfully ask that the town council members consider postponing a final vote on that until the new board is seated in January. That would be respecting the wishes of the voters, which were quite clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick, question for you. Planning commission makes, or Mr. Pack, planning commission hears that, makes a recommendation. How many days do we have to act upon the recommendation, and if we don't act upon it, it's approved? Is that the same thing that you?
Well, if it goes to the town council, the town council has a year.
Has a year, fine, okay. I knew it was like a, there was some timeframe in there, some days or whatever, but anyway, we hear you loud and clear. Thank y'all very much.
It's 100 days of the planning commission.
100 days of the planning commission. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Herb DeGraff, sir, good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Herb DeGraff, 15411 Mills Swamp Road in Smithfield. Prior to convening the meeting, I passed out to everybody a dual-sided copy of this article that came from Consumers Report in August about Aldi markets, because I think economic development is extremely important to us all, particularly when it's something like Aldi markets that can benefit 20-plus Holloway County, including citizens in Smithfield, north of the courthouse, and even folks in Southern Surrey who don't have a grocery store. Aldi, as this article says, is looking at expanding 800 additional markets in the United States, and I dare say that's probably the lower 48, excluding Alaska and Hawaii, that why shouldn't Holloway County be one of those roughly 18, if you averaged them all, as per state? Why shouldn't Holloway County, and Smithfield especially, benefit from having an Aldi market placed here somewhere in Smithfield? And I think it's important to note that Aldi right now has a store at the old Obacy Hospital site in Suffolk, one near Chesapeake Square, and one at the old Churchill and High School site. Whenever I go sing at the two other groups that I sing in, I make it a point if I need anything, it's easy to go by one of them, and it's real easy to pick up good things, as is noted on the back of that page. Those are the things that I surveyed: large eggs, wheat bread, breakfast roll sausage, 1% milk half gallon spinach, leaf type Roma tomatoes, applesauce multi-packs, and lemon juice. I'll tell you a little thing about lemon juice in a minute, and English muffins. Hey, Aldi's package of those items is 49% less costly than a Kroger, and 37% less costly than at Foodline, where I surveyed the same items to make sure that there was an equal comparison. Aldi's prices even beat the military commissary that I have access to as a retired Marine, and I know Mr. Gibbs, retired Navy, likewise. So, I can't encourage this council enough to consider benefiting the 8,000 people in the Smithfield election district, who will benefit tremendously from getting an Aldi nicely in Smithfield somewhere, so that the town gets a tax benefit. And as Ms. Butler and I discussed, well, it'd be nice if the county were to work with the town, as long as it's not just in the county, and the town gets no tax benefit. Yeah, Ben's Grant sitting down there with all those houses going in and that empty business section. Really, look around as to where in Smithfield, on a major corridor, could an Aldi market go? Yeah, I'd heard from somebody that the old Edwards Farm down near the paint store was going to be a pomaco decades ago, and that never happened, but now somebody's looking at it for something else. Because of the 20,000 people in northern Holloway County that would benefit from an Aldi market and these fantastic prices, hey, talk somebody out to put something in there, because we all know that supermarket prices over the last three years have gone up 23%, 23%. Really puts a hurting on people that are living on social security. And I know a lot of my fellow former employees at Smithfield who are living on social security and
One minute.
...from the plant. So, please, consider entering a resolution to the Board of Supervisors to join with you all in spurring economic development to search out an Aldi market for the Smithfield or this near location to Smithfield. As Ms. Keen would say, who formed the Holloway Citizen Association about 40 years ago, it would be, "Go get 'em." And it's better we get on the front end than the tail end, because you don't want to be tail-end Charlie. By the way, tail-end Charlie's the last guy in patrol in the military, in case he has to bug out to go get help. We don't want to have anybody have to bug out to go get help. Last comment about lemon juice. Years ago, when I had my only kidney stone attack, pharmacist said, "Put two tablespoons of lemon juice in your fruit juice every morning. It dissolves the ones you got and keeps other them from forming." I'm a testament to it. It's really good. Last thing, remember Veterans Day is coming up on Monday, the 11th, at 11 o'clock at the memorial right here, and if you like really going to a neat event, Westside Elementary School at 8:45, 9 o'clock does their phenomenal Veterans Day program. If you haven't been, you're a veteran, have a veteran in the family, plan to go, because the kids are phenomenal. And thank you very much for your consideration, that request.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraff. Much appreciated. Ginny Sewell?
Hi, good evening. I'm Ginny Sewell, and I live at 104 Richmond Avenue in Church Square. Many of us were very involved in the CRL and are very happy with the outcome of the election, because we feel our concerns haven't been heard for a long time with the town council. I'm here tonight to request that you don't make any consequential decisions until January, when the new folks are on board. I hope you won't push through a lot of decisions tonight and next month, and I'll start to take more, and will start to take more time to fully hear and consider the citizens' concerns. And in addition, I just wanted to ask, this gentleman made me think of this, does anyone know what's happening with the old Rite Aid? Because I started thinking maybe that would be a great thing for the Aldi thing.
Yes, ma'am. Riverside Hospitals bought that to put it in primary care position.
Oh, they are?
As best I understand.
Okay, all right. I didn't know there was anything to sign on that. Thank you.
Is that correct, Ms. Butler?
That's correct.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, ma'am. I don't have anyone else signed up. Anyone else wish to be heard on other comments? Mr. Hines?
Bob Hines, 216 Washington Street. There's also an Aldi down Mercury Boulevard, not too far from the Coliseum, right off Mercury.
Are they, are Lidl's the ones that are closing, or is Aldi closing some stores? I thought it was one of-
Lidl had one on World Boulevard, and they closed it down. I don't know why.
Okay, but-
It wasn't that long, but they closed it down. Just one up Jefferson, and there's one down there, sort of across from the Aldis off Mercury.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And we liked those two. But on this lemon thing, that's not hokey. My wife had the same experience some years ago, after being misdiagnosed with a stomach virus and went home.
I saw you line up when Dr. DeGraff was giving those instructions.
Yeah, well, I mean, she went home, and a few days later, it showed up again, because you know, it doesn't do it till, I mean, she cracked some teeth. Had to have some root canals over it. Went to a doctor and the x-rater and said, "You got a kidney stone." I don't remember where she got the lemon juice thing from, but it seemed to fix it for her. So, it's not hokey. It's true.
Having a mom that was a dental assistant, she'll tell you that if you have too much lemon juice in your mouth, it'll also cause your teeth to crack.
Right.
Not to get into Dr. Graft, but anyway. Thank you, thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. Anyone else wish to be heard? Sir? Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right. Next is council comments. Anyone on council have any comments for the good or the cause?
I'll just say, I'm a Lidl, I mean, I'm an Aldi fan, and the point's well taken. Thank you, Mr. DeGraff.
Thank you, sir. Next we have is consent agenda. We have item C1. Mr. Pack?
Yes, sir. The first item on here is to, these are kind of split a little differently, Mr. Mayor. Anyhow, the first one is to appropriate, is a resolution to appropriate the remaining ARPA funds, the general fund operating budget for fiscal year '24, '25, so that we can appropriately expend our ARPA funds and not lose them.
Thank you. Item C2, Vice Mayor Butler?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease renewal of 315 Main Street for three years with a 2% increase each year.
Thank you. Item C3, Mr. Pack?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Again, this evening, we have five invoices that are in excess of $20,000, which require council authorization. The first two are to Athens Building Corporation. They are both the sports complex concession building. It's payment application number three and payment application number four at 119-99609 and 104-11102. The second is to Holloway County. This is a shared service for IT. This is a town's portion of $40,500 as one of two payments we'll make in this fiscal year. We have Lewis Construction of Virginia for work on the storm pipe repair at Cedar and Drummond Lane, $36,000. And finally, to Blair Brothers for Moonfield concrete flume repair, $21,625. It is our recommendation that we approve these invoices and get them paid.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any question on the consent agenda items? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve these items as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Pack to approve of item C1, C2, C3, going through item E. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gibbs. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh...
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Donovan?
Yes. The next is the Action Section. The first thing we have on the Action Section is a public hearing pertaining to zoning ordinance amendment, Article 3.R.M. by Tammy Clary, Director of Planning and Community Development. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is a proposed text amendment. This will clarify exemptions for detached, single-family dwellings located within the entrance corridor overlay district. As you know, we are currently in the process of updating our entrance corridor overlay design guidelines, and part of that process, we did spell out the applicability of that and how it does not apply to detached, single-family dwellings. We wanted to make sure that that was clear and correlated across our guidelines, along with our zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Clary, by committee, members of council? Thank you, Ms. Clary.
Mr. Mayor, I just asked-
Yes, you may.
This was a staff-initiated change during review. This was not a change by council or anybody else. It was a staff-initiated change. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to be heard? I do not have anyone signed up to, does anyone wish to be heard on this matter? If, thank you, ma'am. If not, I will close the public hearing. The matter is before the council. For questions, motions, any further? If not, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment, Article 3.R.M. as presented. Motion made by Councilman Pax, sir, second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Collins. Further discussion. Could you call the roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh...
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Donovan?
Yes. The next is the approval of town council summary minutes and continued town council summary minutes. Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I recommend the minutes be approved as presented.
Motion made, I'm sorry, um...
Need a motion.
Need a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Brooks. Further discussion. Could you call the question, please, ma'am?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Smith? Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Mayor Donovan?
Yes. Next is new business. Cypress Crossing requests for limited access break. Tammy Clary?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is a request for town council support for a limited access break. This would be at the intersection of the bypass and South Church Street. This would provide a fourth leg of the intersection and access to the 14-acre parcel that's located at that, at that intersection. This is one piece of the application package that the applicant is proposing to send to VDOT for their approval.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Clary, by members of council?
I'd like some clarification exactly where it's located.
Madam Vice Mayor?
So, if you're traveling down South Church Street, where you would cross over where the bypass is, it would be the fourth leg, so you'd be able to go straight. You could still turn left and head down Ben's Church, and then right and access the bypass, but this would be the straight through, providing access to that larger 14-acre parcel.
Oh, okay.
It would connect down, there would be a private road that would connect down to Cypress Crossing. So, it's that quadrant.
It will connect to the private road?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Further questions? We do this by consensus, or we need a motion?
Need a motion.
Chair will entertain a motion. The chair will entertain a motion.
If you have any questions about this, this is, this is in the long-term highway plan. It's been there for, um...
How many years?
For, for, I couldn't even tell you, but it's been, we've spent a lot of money redesigning that whole intersection and improving that with the idea that there would be a crossover onto that property at some point in the future. It's suitable for development, and it'll be built at the developer's expense, not at the, any cost of the time of the state.
So, to be clear, just, I understand what we're talking about here.
So to be clear, just so I understand what we're talking about here. We're leaving Smithfield. We go past Hardee's, McDonald's, Anna's on our right, and we get to the stoplight there. This is to allow the, to be a straight ahead, so this becomes really a four-way intersection instead of a three-way. Correct? And that would allow that, I believe it's Gualley Frontier Farm or Gualley Farm or something like that?
Yeah, it used to be.
And that what was called, what the property called, be developed at some point?
Yeah, there's no, do you have any plans pending right now?
We have a preliminary plat for the area, but we do not have any overall conceptual plans. The only site plans that we do have that's under review would be the mod wash, which is being accessed on the Cypress Crossing entrance.
But that was, that whole bypass was built, there's, there's a tremendous piece of right of way there to accommodate the, I think, future widening of lanes. The whole thing was designed many, many years ago. There's never a need to build that fourth leg, because it was, that was private property over there. It was the Gualley family and the Clay used to live back there, but it was...
Used to be a horse stable.
It used to be a horse table. There was a big barn there for the longest time.
It's still there. Tammy, do me a favor. Explain to the council what you need from council, again, if you would, please.
Sure. This is just town council support for the application package that the applicant is preparing in order to obtain this limited access break.
Since it's a limited access corridor, the Commonwealth Transportation Board has to approve any access to that corridor, and it does require local support.
Well, that's what I needed, that's what I was hoping for.
So this would just be something in support of that, that we would ask the Commonwealth Transportation Board to consider this application?
That's what I wanted to hear. That'd work. Yes, sir. Councilman Smith?
Does this pertain to what went on at the Grange where they go out on 10? Is that similar to, and has that been verded like this to grant them that? Have they questioned that or applied for that? Or does VDOT approve that?
They're in that process.
Okay, so that hasn't been brought to us?
Well, we, the council did send a letter of support asking that they consider, that the Commonwealth Transportation Board consider that access, because it was part of the approved plan.
And then it would come back to us?
If, if the Commonwealth Transportation Board approves the access break, then it wouldn't need to come back to us.
Okay, so why is this coming before us?
Because it, because the ask of the Commonwealth Transportation Board requires the local government's support.
I guess what Mike is saying is, with the Grange, they came to us after the fact, and this is kind of before.
Well, no, this, they seem similar, they seem similar to me. I just...
They are similar, but we had already approved the Grange, and we just approved their access recently.
Well, we just approved the application, is that right?
Right. And so this, hypothetically, this would probably be the appropriate path, so that way, if somebody came to the table, they already know whether VDOT would grant them access or not.
Would approve that, okay.
And again, it makes logical sense that there would eventually be a fourth leg there versus some other access to that parcel.
Ticket calls a bottleneck at Cypress Run.
Right, because that would be the only other access at this point in time.
And we're not approving it, we're just saying that we support it if the transportation department...
That's right.
Approves it, okay.
It's one of those things where the Commonwealth of Virginia does not want to get ahead of the locality. They want to make sure locality is informed of it and, and support it. That's what that is.
So the only thing that would happen is some type of light switching thing, correct?
Right, and if somebody were to come with an application to develop that parcel, they would already know that the Commonwealth would agree to that access.
And then they would have to design the entrance to in order, okay.
And typically, they'd have to pay for the change, the change in the signalization. I mean, that would not be the Times nickel, and because developers pay the cost and stuff like that.
Especially on a state highway.
Which would probably not be insignificant like that.
Right. What's the pleasure of council?
I'd like to make a motion to support the request from Hudden Smithfield, Virginia LLC to obtain this request from the Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Butler. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gibbs. Further discussion. Could you call the question, ma'am?
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh...
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes. Next is old business. Joyner Field Parking Lot. Mr. Stallings, you handling that?
Yes, sir. At the committee meetings, there was a discussion about evaluating Joyner Field for a potential parking lot, a municipal lot. I did reach out to one of our engineering firms on call and got an estimated, a very high-level estimate, with them doing no significant engineering work, to see what they thought it might cost to turn that into a municipal lot. They gave me an estimate of $568,000. So, and of that, $50,000 is estimated in engineering costs. So to refine that and to move forward to determine, you know, what we could do with that parcel, we would have to engage in engineers to start doing that work. So this is before you, so you have some order of magnitude of what it might cost to put a municipal lot there on that site. It does look like we may be able to get as many as 52 additional parking spots on the lot. So again, it's before council. If you would like to move forward, we should anticipate about $50,000 in engineering cost that would do the design work and then get us through construction.
Have a question. Councilman Smith, question?
Going back to what Mayor said about looking at it in two different ways, if something were to happen to that building, and we might build something there plus, was that considered?
That was part of the discussion, is that as they engineered, we will want to know that in the future, there may be a possibility of eventually building a building there that would be above the parking lot. So they would consider that in their design work, but this estimate is just for a parking lot. But they would have that in the back of their mind as they designed the lot.
$10,000 a spot. You gotta pick up on that math real quick. Just a little bit more than, which is better than a parking garage, which is $30,000 a spot, so.
And the reason this came up, a lot, a lot of citizens have approached me on this and about parking concerns downtown, so that's why we started talking about this. And, and yes, $10,000 a spot is, I mean, it's pretty average right now. So I think it's, it is a good option for a project. That price tag kind of shocked me when I, when I first thought about it, the whole, the whole project. But I think I've gotten a lot, a lot of people talking to me and then concerned down there.
And we had a brief discussion with engineers about considering gravel versus pavement, but with the slope of that lot, we would have constant maintenance issues if it was gravel. The, the spot, the gravel lot we already have that front Cedar Street, we are constantly having to fix washes on that parking lot. So that's why we didn't consider gravel as an option.
Well, yeah, I wanted to, you want to ponder it a while? Think on it?
Yeah. Okay. But just so you know, if this is an option you want to pursue, that's, that's about what it would cost to, to make that happen.
Yeah, I understand the necessity as far as the parking down there is concerned, especially since we've lost some parking down there. But, let's, let's keep it in file.
We will let it sit.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The next is further discussion on the Ben's Church Boulevard Turner Drive Transportation Project. Mr. Stallings?
Just a spot on your agenda for council to have another discussion about the project and the request that has come from the county, and then we can take, staff can take direction from council as to how you want us to proceed.
Well, I can't make the motion, but I think what we should do, or maybe consider doing, is having Mr. Stallings and Mr. Riddick discuss the matter with the, with the county and move along, and I think we would probably need a motion to authorize them to do that.
I don't know if we need a motion. I think we just direct the, Mr. Riddick and Mr. Stallings.
If you're happy with the consensus, and that's...
Based on some of the guidance that we have given them.
If they're happy and you're happy with that, that's, that's, it, does anyone oppose that, that process?
They'll come back to us and recommend it if you have.
Yes, sir.
And time is of the essence.
Yes.
The county doesn't need an answer.
First journey. Will be, yes. All right. Anything else to come before council? If not, meeting adjourned.